Next, we will convene the city council's study session. All of our council is present. Item number one on this agenda is to review the agenda items for our Monday, January 13th meeting, so please refer to that document. Currently, there are no items on the or off of the consent agenda, but I know there's lots of good stuff to talk about at this meeting. Council, anything you'd like to start with for several items? Our liquor license applications. Mr. Freeman.
Chris, are we going to take 6B off the agenda, or how's that going to stay?
Yes, so I was going to wait till we got there, but yes. We're going to take 6B off, but we're going to bring it back with... There's a variety of other areas in our... The development with the City Creek Development where they are requesting the ability to do, take on the maintenance responsibilities, and so we want to do them comprehensively as opposed to doing one at a time. So, we're going to come back with a comprehensive plan and present that to council so you can see that.
I think that I had some friends reach out, but there was some north-south traffic flow issues perhaps in that area on the Sway that we may need to look at.
All right, sure.
Okay, so I'm sorry, 6B is coming off of the agenda?
Correct.
Okay. I had a question on 6A, just less a question, just more of a congratulatory statement. The grid is a great development that we've been talking about for quite a while, and I noticed that there's fences going up now, and we have a groundbreaking schedule, so it's good to see that this is happening. So, congratulations to everyone involved in that project. I know there's a lot of staff time that was dedicated to this. It's a very innovative project where we're utilizing an underutilized city parking garage for a great new development, so I just wanted to point out that that's happening and wish everyone, congratulations for all the hard work that went into that.
Mayor, we should just note that this doesn't really change the development agreement, it just adjusts the timeframes that are in...
Yeah. So, this is an amendment that's really just updating the dates on the agreement? No substantive changes? Okay. Thank you. Other questions, council?
I have a question on 5D, just a matter of, you know, my own curiosity of the new Mesa Express Library location and where that is.
So, we are, we have a lease, a proposed lease, but it would be Guadalupe and Sossaman. So, kind of continuing with the idea where we've used the Mesa Express Library to, on the east side, to kind of fit into existing retail centers, underutilized retail centers. So, that's, we're going to be near a Subway and a CVS and a Danit Ballerina or Dance or something. So, Vila Bertos, Vila Bertos is there, that's right, that's right. So, it's going to fit right in.
You have a new favorite library now. Item 7A, I thought was interesting, Chris, just because we're, we have, I think we all know we have the form-based code downtown that gives us some flexibility in working with developers and projects, and parking is very much a topic of conversation with all the activity downtown. Could someone, it looks to me like this is really just giving staff more flexibility, right? The way that it's worded now is thou shalt build a parking garage at X number of spaces, and we're kind of giving some flexibility to that?
Mayor, council, that's absolutely correct. So, the, right now, the requirement in the code absolutely require you to build a parking structure whenever you are building a mid-rise building. What we are recommending right now to the board is basically to make it optional, however, it's not reducing the number of parking spaces that will be required for development. So, they have the option to provide either a structured parking or just your traditional parking on the side. Right now, we don't have that flexibility of working with them, and that has actually deter several good development that has come in because they have to absolutely build a structured parking even though they can accommodate their parking needs on the side.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Freeman?
So, Nana, and along with that, if it's a city-owned property, are we retaining those parking places where that structure is for public parking?
Maybe, I need a bit clarification, but even if it's a city-owned property, they still need to meet the number of parking spaces that are required.
Are you talking about the city would be?
No, if, I think Jeff knows what I'm after here. Thanks, Jeff.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, the...
I think you're referring to the two potential developments on city-owned parking lots in downtown.
Yes.
This would not, in addition to the code change, this would not affect our current agreements with those developers that they have to maintain and replace all the public parking on a one-to-one basis in addition to any of their parking needs as part of their development.
I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. Other questions, council?
Another question, as far as just curiosity. I see that H-Mart is applied for their liquor license. When is it opening? Do we have a projected date?
Last night, I was reading an AZ Central article that said it's going to be mid-February. So, and maybe someone knows more than AZ Central that can tell us that.
We will get that information out as soon as we hear, Mayor. I know that we haven't heard a specific date, so...
Construction is underway.
Yeah, I think that's the key.
Yeah, just when they're putting food on the shelves, so... And there will be a ribbon cutting, I believe, and Frank, I know it's Frankie's district, and they've been talking to Frankie, but it's going to be quite a celebration when it opens. Yeah, okay. I had a general question on item eight. I know this is, we did have a staff presentation on this, seems like a couple of months ago, but given that it's now to the point where we are noticing the public hearing, I thought it would be good just to remind ourselves. I know there are, well, maybe enough said. Can you remind us what we're doing here under agenda item number eight?
Yes, good morning, Mayor and Council. Agenda item number eight is related to utility rate adjustments, and if you recall back in October, we gave quite a few presentations. Water did a presentation as well as energy resources and solid waste, and so we went over those rate adjustments. On November 4th, the city council adopted or approved a notice of intent. What that does is just really give notice to the public that council will be considering rate adjustments. So, that's what happened on November 4th, and it's set January 27th as the public hearing. So, what we're doing on Monday is actually introducing the ordinances for those adjustments as well as the resolutions. The public hearing will actually happen on the 27th, and then a consideration of the ordinances will happen at that time. What we're looking at here, if those ordinances are approved, the effective date would be March 1st for those rate adjustments. I want, do want to clarify too, we tried to put it in some of the verbiage here, but these are really non-residential rates for the adjustments. There's a couple that we did on the residential side in some areas, but it's not your standard. There are no rate increases being recommended for your typical, like, water residential, those types of things, if you recall those presentations we had in October.
So, my recollection is it was generally commercial, solid waste.
And there was some adjustments in the water, too. There were some tiers that we had to adjust for high-end users and, right?
Correct, and we are, some on the water side, for the residential side, we are adjusting the tier brackets, but not the tier rates. So, the rate for tier one and tier two would remain the same. It's the bracket of what qualifies for a tier one or a tier two.
Candace, I know there was some service charge, just like increases like 25 cents on some of them. Is that correct?
Correct. If you look back, and it is in the packet, has the full changes that are being made there as well, but would the, if you really want an overview of that, the best thing is to have those presentations in October give a real good overview, but that's correct. There's some, there's some individual service charge versus a usage charge, those types of things. It depends on the, each commodity is a little bit different and how they're structured.
Thanks. This might be more of a legal question, but I'm just curious, it seems like half of these are just making what we're doing a public record. I'm just curious why we're doing that. Are they not already public record?
So, Mayor and Council, this is sort of a two-step process, and this is how we've always done the rates, and you'll see this occasionally is where you have a very large document, you'll have a resolution that'll make that document a public record, and then the ordinances then adopts that prior resolution and that public record. And so, it's a statutory mechanism for adopting ordinances. And so, like, one that you'll see is very large changes to the zoning code, or when we adopted an entirely new zoning code, it'll be done exactly like this also, where you have a resolution that puts the new zoning code on record with the city clerk, and then the ordinance just references back, and that way you don't have to publish the entire zoning code.
Okay. Thank you. So, I guess the summary of this is what we're doing is just introducing this. We noticed it back in October because there's a 60-day requirement, but now we're noticing the public hearing, it'll be on the 27th. 27th, we will have a public hearing, and we probably all ought to refer back to the presentations on October to be brought up to speed on exactly...
Correct, and, and just so everyone knows, and we can kind of, we can put this out on our website as well if we want to do that, but the water presentation was given on October 10th, so if you want to review that, that is, the video is available out on our website. So, October 10th was the water presentation. October 31st, we reviewed gas, electric, and solid waste.
So, Mayor, if you'd like, we could make a presentation upstairs at some point to the public with a summary of...
Yeah, I think when there's anxious or others thought, I think when, during the public hearing, it'd be good to rehearse what it is where the hearing is.
You can do that, Mayor.
Yeah. Okay. Other comments on that? Yeah. All right. Council, any other questions or requests for information on Monday's, thank you, Candace, on Monday's agenda?
So, Mayor, there is an item that is not on this draft that we're going to add for Monday. It's a zoning case that's been continued since October, I believe, and since that time, the developer has worked, and Councilor Thompson can speak to us, but worked with the neighborhoods, neighborhood, and worked out an arrangement that has actually made the proposal less dense and more acceptable, both to the residents and, I think, the council member. So, it was to be continued, but it, because it's changed since October, there's been some changes, although it's been less dense. We think we're anticipating that we'll bring that to you on, we'll add it to this agenda, so you'll see it on Monday, and if there's any questions, we can talk about it Monday afternoon, and then with the idea of proving it on the second meeting that we have in January. It's a small development. I think it's called Eastridge, so... Yes, that's the one, yeah, so... Southeastridge. So, we're going to bring that forward. It's not on the agenda today. It's, it'll be an introduction for Monday, so we can talk about it Monday afternoon and then move it forward. It's just been, there's been a lot of work that's happened since it came out of PMZ. It's been continued, I think, continued, well, like, three months, but they have come to a resolution with the neighbors, so we want to try to get that on the agenda then.
So, it's not for final approval, it's just for introduction on Monday, and so if we have questions, we can deal with them on the 27th, right? Okay. Does that sound good? All right. Thank you. If there's nothing else on Monday's agenda, we'll go back to our study session agenda. And item two for this meeting is to hear a presentation and provide direction on a proposed new process in software acquisition for managing the city's public records requests and appointments for vice boards and committees. Holly, welcome.
Hi, good morning, Mayor, Council.
Morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
We have Liz Wiltrow and Pat Phelps here today, too, from the Police Department. So, we wanted to come and show you some new software that we have for managing public records requests. It's called GovQA, and I don't know if it's going to go up on the screen or not. There we go. Okay. So, the software that we have purchased, the Police Department has it as well, so it manages public records requests. It's a software management solution specifically for that, and I'm going to give you a little insight on our current process for public records requests and then the benefits of this new software. That is pretty exciting. So, currently, our public records requests are done online, so we have a webpage on the internet, I don't know if any of you have looked at it, but it takes you to a page where it's very lengthy, there's a lot of data on it for good reason. It starts with the public being able to see a section about frequently requested items, maybe building permits or certificate of occupancy, the things that are frequently asked for, and then it gives them a quick link to that department, so it'll take them to Development Services. And then it has a section about outside agencies. We get a lot of requests for marriage licenses and things that don't pertain to the city, so those links are there so they can help them go to the right department for that or right agency. Then it takes them to a section as you scroll further down the page that is frequently asked questions, and then you scroll a little further, and you have some, our open Datal portal is on there, too, so it tells them that there's a lot of resources already online, and you can access them through here. And then it takes them down to the public records request form. So, the idea is to let them know that a lot of these resources are already available online before they have to submit a public records request, but it's pretty lengthy, so like with anything, they, you know, you call an 800 number, and they don't want to go through all the choices, they just go to zero because they want a person. So, I think it tends to be they scroll to the bottom, and they want to submit a request. And there is a list of the various departments that they may reach for a request or other, and they fill out their contact information, the type of description. So, a lot of times, they click other, and that comes to the city clerk's office. So, we do get a lot of requests in our office, and it comes through via email, and a lot of the times, because it's for another department, we then transfer it to that department, let the customer know, we received your request, it's gone over to, say, Code Enforcement, and they'll be responding to you. Sometimes that customer will contact us again a couple of weeks later if they haven't heard back, and so there's a lot of back and forth. And then sometimes they do go to the correct department, and we have no way of knowing because there's no centralized way of managing public records requests currently. One of the other issues with the current process is that we do not take payments electronically as Councilmember, whatever knows. You have to come in with a cash or check currently to, you know, to pick up a public records request, so...
Or if someone's nice enough, you can Venmo them the money.
We find a way. There's currently no tracking ability because each department manages their own requests. They may manage, they may track it separately. We in our office actually tally how many we receive, and then at the end of the month, we put it into our performance measures, but there's no good, easy tracking ability. There could be possible duplicated efforts, I'm sure there are, where different departments may be receiving requests for the same things, or even our department, we may receive a request, and then a couple of months later, the same request, and you're, so you're duplicating your efforts to pull the information, so... Those are all of the current issues for us, and then the Police Department has their own set of issues because they handle things a little differently, so...
On the Police Department's, excuse me, on the Police Department's side, these forms are not electronically submitted to us at this time. They're submitted as paper or come in through email or some other requests like that, but internally, that's managed as a paper process. So, for us, this is going to allow us to consolidate all of that into a single system, so it'll be a complete electronic process for us, and even ones that do come in for paper could be enter-scanned and entered into the system for tracking purposes. And within the PD, there's a lot of different areas that receive public records requests, depending on whether it's police reports or body worn camera footage or radio traffic. So, internally, we're going through a process to start consolidating that all into a single group, so that it'll be one group using a single system to process all of these requests so we can process them more efficiently and in a more timely manner.
Right. So, we want to share with you the benefits of this new process. So, the first benefit is for the public. It's a simple and consistent webpage, so currently, like I said, they go in and they can access records from various departments. By clicking on those links, it takes them to the department's webpages. They all may look different. This Development Services, they then have another link to go to their Dimes system that Development Services uses, and they create an account there, but not every department requires them to create an account or a form. Some departments have custom forms that they require to be filled out. So, this new system will have the same page that they go to, whether it's the Public Police Department portal or the Citywide portal. It's still going to look the same either way. They're going to start filling out the requests of what they want. The form on this page is dynamic, so it helps the person narrow down what it is they're looking for. So, it'll have little pop-ups that help them along the way, so if they're entering, if they're looking for a code enforcement violation, they, it'll pop up and ask them, what is the address? So, there's certain fields that we can now require based on what they're looking for that'll help us satisfy the request. Another benefit is deflection. So, this page, as they start entering the information that they're looking for, they'll get a sidebar that pops up, and it kind of deflects them to other areas in the system where we may already have this information available. It's already online, whether it be another public records request that was previously done, and it's been published because it may be a popular item, like the pigeon ordinance that was constantly requested. It would pop up and say, oh, we already have this out here, here you go, and they can just pull it up. They don't have to submit a request. It will also deflect them to our open data portal, so if we have anything online, like the budget and stuff like that, it'll take them to that as well, so they don't have to go through and fill out the rest of the form. Every customer creates a profile, so they can always go on and log in and see all of their history, and then we can always go on and see their history as well, which is kind of nice. They have tickets now. Every time a public records request comes through, it's going to be created, it's going to create a ticket in the system that's numbered, that ticket is automatically going to come to the city clerk's office. We're going to manage all of the records citywide except for the BD, of course. So, it's also going to automatically assign that ticket to the correct department based on what they're looking for. So, if they're looking for code enforcement, it's automatically going to send an email notification to Code Enforcement, letting them know you have a pending request. So, all the tickets are assigned, and those statuses are now viewable, so we can all log on, and we can see what is the status of this request if somebody calls us by chance or whatever the case may be. The automatic alerts and notifications, like I said, those are going to be really nice, they're going to save a lot of emails, because even when the customer submits the request initially, they're going to get an automatic response, letting them know we've received it, it's being taken care of, and then we internally get the notifications. We can also set up notifications to say if this ticket hasn't been touched in 20, or 24 to 48 hours, it alerts us so that we know that somebody's still waiting for a response. So, there's various tracking and reporting abilities in the new system, and payments can be made electronically. So, here's just a screenshot of what the form will look like when they first log in. So, it's just a simple, on the left, they have some quick topics and frequently asked questions, and on the right, they start filling in their form, and because the form is dynamic as they start filling in information, it'll provide some dropdowns or some additional fields for information that we may be asking for. And then this is a screen of what the deflection looks like. So, as they do start punching in that information, the sidebar pops up on the right, and it lets them know these are some quick finds, some requests that have already been out there, or the open data. So, this is going to reduce the number of requests that actually come through, and it's also going to reduce duplication amongst staff. And this is a view of what some of our reporting will look like. So, we can quickly log on and see all of the requests that have come through. These are all the tickets that we have. You can search, you can filter the search by the top of those fields, it's kind of like an Excel sheet, so you can filter by status, you can filter by department, and when we do come up with these report layouts that we want, we can save them as a template, so every month, we can pull it up and just refresh the data. And the city clerk's office also took over the responsibility this year of advisory boards and committee management, so the current process for that is, this is just a little high-level view of what that is, but applications for that also come through online on a different webpage on our website. They submit an application for a board, they can select multiple boards, they can upload a resume. Unfortunately, the resumes don't come through with those applications and the emails, we have to request those later. When a vacancy occurs, then we look, either we or the board liaison, depending on the bylaws, of all the current pending applications for the boards. We provide recommendations to the mayor. He takes it to the council, or the applications come to the council for review and approval. Once they're approved, we send letters to those new applicants, or we send letters, letting them, thanking them for their interest if there are no current vacancies. Everything's managed on a spreadsheet and through email, so there's a lot of back and forth, it's very timely. The loyalty oaths are currently managed separately, so they have to fill out a loyalty oath, and it's filed in our file cabinet for retention. So, in looking at the GovQA and what it can do for the public records requests and all of the fields and features that they have, we thought maybe they'll be able to help with advisory boards, because currently, there's nothing out there that manages advisory boards, and a lot of cities have been looking for stuff. So, we asked them, and they put us on a call with their developer, and he said, yeah, I think I can make this work. So, they created a module through GovQA that we can use for our advisory board management. So, that new process allows the, now the applicant is going to create a customer profile. It's going to look a lot like our public records side of things, but they're going to create a profile, they can see the choices of all the boards that they may want to apply to. Each application will come through as a different ticket, so one person can apply to five different boards. Currently, it comes through as one. Now, it just automatically duplicate and make five separate tickets, so each ticket will then be assigned to the board liaison for that board, and then of course, will come to our department. Everything can be done electronically now through that, so we can submit or send those applications to the mayor, the board liaison, everybody can review the resume in an application. Internal communications are now going to be centralized, you don't have to deal with back and forth emails, anybody can log on, that we give access to the system, of course, and can log on and see. We can run reports to show whose term limit is coming up soon, how many boards have vacancies, what are the members of the boards. By district, we can look and see how many members we have by each district, because all the fields that are in the system are reportable, so that will be really useful. The loyalty oaths as well will be uploaded on the system, they'll be on their customer profile, so we can always look and see which loyalty oath may be missing quickly, and that will help with retention. And then, of course, the tracking abilities, like I mentioned, you can run reports various different ways for vacancies and term limits.
I do have a question on the advisory boards. So, on this new portal that we're creating under your department, will it have the advisory board openings listed? Because I think in the past, it's just a matter of people just kind of apply blindly, not knowing if there's an opening or not.
Right, yes, so we can, we can provide any information that we want to, and we will do that. I'm thinking, we haven't designed this module just yet, but I think on the left, it'll say all the different boards we have, and they can click on that and get information about what that board does, and then which ones have vacancies on them at the time.
Okay, great, thank you.
And a good point, Jen, because sometimes someone will apply for a specific board, not knowing that there's not a vacancy on that board, and there's not going to be one, you know, for a year or so, and that can be a frustrating experience. So, I think the way that, if this is designed saying, here's the options that are available, I think that would help the process.
Yes, thank you. So, just an overview of the summaries of benefits for this program that I've already mentioned several, but there's some other useful features that I hadn't mentioned. So, we have the simplified process, it's going to be more user-friendly, consistent, and dynamic. It's going to provide deflection, which is going to save time and give quick access to records for people. The software supports accuracy, so what I mean by that is whenever the staff member does upload the documents or the records that the person is requesting, there's also like a little checklist that reminds them, did you check the emails? Did you check your shared drive? Any location that that record may be, it's just going to remind them that they have searched, so that they're confident that the information they're given is accurate. They can also log, if we choose to, we can have them log how much time they spent on that. We don't charge for admin time to handle public records requests, but it would be nice, I think, to document how much time it is taking for each record request, because then we can run reports to show what's the average time. So, they can do all of that on that, on the point of uploading the information. Electronic payments, of course, improved communication, the automatic alerts and the access to tickets that all staff will have will make the communication much better. The reporting and tracking abilities are probably endless, so that's, that's a big win. Trending topics. It does give you the ability to have a trending topics area, so you can send out news alerts, publish articles, you can have notifications. A customer can actually request to be notified if a certain subject, if something comes out about a certain subject, they can request notification, and the system would automatically send it to them. So, I know we use some other kind of news alert areas on our webpage, but I don't know if you'd want to use this, but it's there. And then legal claims. So, we have an inter-agency module that they're creating just for, basically for the city clerk's office to handle the claims. So, they're still going to come through, hand-delivered to our office, we're still going to accept them, but now we can scan them and put them through this system and create a ticket that sends it to the attorney's office and whatever other department the claim is for, so that we can just track it internally to make sure it's getting to where it needs to go, and then for retention purposes. So, that's short, sweet, and hopefully to the point. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Freeman.
So, Holly, you're doing 12,000 record requests. Are we doing that manually per year?
That would be the PD.
That's on the PD side.
On the PD side.
Yeah, Police Records is doing about 12,000 a year. Department-wide, it's almost 25,000 when you take into account body worn cameras, 911 recordings, all of that other media.
And that's just for PD?
Just for PD.
What about the other departments? Is there a...
There's no tracking.
There's no tracking?
Yeah, that's, that's the dilemma.
I think this is the conundrum that we're after here, right?
Yeah, it goes out to all the different departments that are responding. That's part of our, we don't have a centralized way of knowing that.
Yeah, so I guess my question back is, you're having to track this manually and... Yeah, so I guess my question back is, you're having to track this manually and hoping that everything flows fluidly, so that you can get the information back to the person who's requested the public records, and it's sometimes timely and difficult to do that. And not having this process engaging and helping is, I think, I'm all in, so I was just a little thinking, man, this is archaic in a way, okay? So thank you.
Mr. Reddy.
Just sending the same question, PD-wise, do you convert it electronically as far as the paper form, or, just curious?
So generally, that, when we get that paper form in, it is actually tracked as paper.
Okay.
We may also get a request via email, but once we have this in place, all these requests that come in, if it does come in in paper, we will scan it into this system, so that we internally can manage it electronically. And it allows us to distribute that request out electronically within the department to, the request may come in, say, to the records section, but the documents they need may be in other areas of the department, so they can electronically send that request out and get it back, instead of having to do a paper tracking process to get that information.
And then you mentioned, there's currently no dedicated group that handles this. Is there staff that handles it in PD?
There is, sir. So, for example, in the, in the records section, it's a shared responsibility. If you come into the counter to request a report, or we get a mail-in, that, that's just an assigned duty for the day to somebody in there. We're, we're bringing that into a dedicated group, so that it'll always be the same people that are processing public records requests, so everything's consistent with that. And then we've started a process within the PD, the digital media especially was coming out of multiple different areas, and all of those areas are being brought into the same division now, so that we will have, within the same division, all of these requests being processed, instead of in different areas of the department. So it's the electronic component of this system and the assistance that provides us, along with bringing everybody together into a group.
So is there a person, or persons that will do the follow-up, or is there currently one, some of those staff members that conduct follow-up on public records requests?
Sorry, asking like, internally within a department, like, hey, we need this information, we're waiting on it?
Yeah.
So that'll depend on, yes, there is. It occurs a little differently, depending on what group, what type of request it is. If it's, for example, body-worn camera footage, we have dedicated people that do that, and 911, we have dedicated people that, it's a very small group of people. They were just in different areas of the department, and they're now all coming together.
And then what's the timeline for this, this, the system?
I think we can deploy it within 60 days. That's what we were hoping for. We were actually hoping to finish it before election time kind of broke, broke in, but it'll probably be the end of March.
End of March, okay.
So I'm assuming, I think there's a mayor's page that says advisory groups and committees, there'll be a link to that, to the application process, right?
The mayor's one, sir.
Isn't there one that says?
Well, this has been housed in the mayor's office, the, the board applications, and we've asked the clerk's office to help us with that, that's, they're better at managing these types of things. So it was, it was fortunate that we were exploring how to best do this, at the same time the police department was purchasing this other, this is an add-on to the other, that other software. So these are two ideas that are coming together at the same time. And so, yes, we, we need, do need to be better at the way we, as I indicated earlier, advertise what boards and committees have openings, and a more streamlined process. So, so yes, there will, it will be linked to the city Facebook page and website, if you want, go to boards and committees, this will be where you're taken to, to fill out this application, that'll then put it into this process.
And we can use the trending topics feature to, you know, alert the public, hey, we have some boards with openings right now, these are the boards, and kind of get the word out there, too, which we probably would use that when it comes time for board members who are on their second term, and their term's going to expire, and we have to look for, for new members.
So maybe like a banner saying, "Current openings on boards and commissions, these are potential openings that are going to be available next year."
Right, yeah. So we would keep that updated like that.
Now, as far as your digital media, how are you sending that to the requestor?
It's predominantly CD or DVD, depending on the volume of it right now. Assuming it's like a true public records request, we'll provide them some sort of a disk.
Do you eventually go, just use Dropbox for that, or?
We have some ability to do that. There's, I think we, it's something we can explore, we're looking at doing that now with some of the digital media. We're kind of in the very early stages with that. So we're currently using that for, for example, inter-agency releases, something to the county attorney's office, the city prosecutors, we've got those shares in place, and that's kind of our first step into that, to see how that's working.
Okay, great, thank you.
To that point, I assume the bulk of the 25,000 requests you're getting are motor vehicle accident reports. Is that not true?
I honestly don't, you know?
So a lot of the motor vehicle accident reports can actually be accessed through another system, these insurance companies. So record, our records department specifically sends those reports to that system, where a customer could go out and purchase their accident report, or an insurance company could do the same thing. So we, we do, in the sense that, get a lot, in the sense that we send them over to this system, it's through LexisNexis automatically, but I would say, no, a lot of our public records are the variety of cases, everything from homicides to burglaries, and there's a multitude of reasons people want their requests. So I would say no.
Wow, I didn't know, so that's a lot of requests. I thought it was just the normal insurance claims, but no, this is above and beyond that, huh?
Yes, there are a lot of requests.
Jim?
Mayor, if I may, I just want to thank the city clerk. She's taking on this new project, and she agreed to do this. There are innumerable requests. They, many of them are the other, they fall across different departments, they involve many documents, and so I'm just really thankful that the city clerk was willing to take on this, this project, and, and work also with the police department, and get one software package, so that we're really working sort of seamlessly between all the public records requests, and so, thank you.
Amen to that. I think we had a nominator for clerk of the year. Can you do that two years in a row? No? Okay. Well, let me just say, amen to that again, because occasionally, we see folks come to city council meetings expressing frustration over records requests, and they feel like they're being, you know, ignored, or put at the end of the line, and so this will just help, I think, alleviate a lot. And a lot of these are duplicate requests, where people are making just shotgun, you know, requests of all departments, and so this will really help us to be more transparent, relieve the frustration on both the staff and the public side, and to go through this process. So it's overdue, and I think it's a great idea to move forward. So I do see its agenda as, as asking for direction. I assume, yeah, do we need to make a motion to approve this, or?
I hear consensus.
Yeah, consensus, I see it's not.
What's, what's the cost of this? Have we got a cost analysis?
Yes, it's, to implement it initially, it's 37,000, and then, which includes all the modules that we have, and then annually, it's a subscription of like 35,000.
Sounds like a dollar per request.
Good math there.
Yeah.
That's just on the PD side.
Right, right.
Yeah, and if you, if you can lower the amount of staff time being used, this is a net.
It's a staff member, you know, just like any software, I feel like it's like a part-time or full-time person.
Okay. Counsel, any other questions regarding this topic? Okay, I think you've got the direction you're, you're needing, right? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is item three, that's to hear reports on meetings and conferences attended. Counsel, we've been off for a few weeks for the holidays, so I'm sure we've got a lot to talk about. Any, who wants to start?
Mayor, my item three.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, did I skip something?
It's a minute.
Oh, excuse me. Thank you very much, I apologize. Item three is to hear, no, oh, well, item four, I guess we're out of order. Hear reports on meetings and conferences attended is item three. Item four is acknowledge receipts of board minutes, right? So is that out of order?
Yes.
All right, let's go ahead and do item four. Let's acknowledge receipt of board minutes. Is there a motion to that effect? Thank you, Mr. Thompson, Mr. Luna, all in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Now, item three, hear reports on meetings and conferences attended.
I don't think there's enough time.
We've all been busy, yes, well, start with Mr. Luna.
I don't have a report, I just wanted to announce that Hava Java just opened in northeast Mesa, so if you want a fresh cup of coffee, or later on, go drink a glass of wine, it's a northeast Mesa McDowell in power, so it's a great addition to our community.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Thompson.
Just real quick, I want to do, January is the sex and human trafficking awareness month, and so I wanted to give a shout-out to Commander Mitrari and his group. Got a little update for 2019, the heat squad, the human exploitation and trafficking squad, did four operations, had 84 felony arrests, all those operations were targeted towards child sex persons, and throughout the year, they rescued 26 adults and nine juveniles throughout the 2019. So kudos to you and your squad, and great job, and I'm glad we have you onboard.
I'll take a moment, Mr. Whittaker and I were at a ribbon-cutting, was it yesterday?
Yep.
In, in his district, Aqua Tots. Jeremy might want to help me on this one, but Aqua Tots is, I think we're all used to driving around seeing Aqua Tots on the corners in Mesa. I think we don't appreciate how, what a big deal that is. They are actually an international corporation, and they're international, they dedicated their international headquarters in Mesa, they're in, all over the United States, but also in 14 different countries. So there's always people in that facility from different parts of the world, learning about how to start one of those franchises, and they dedicated a beautiful building with Uncle Bear's Brewery in the bottom, in the floor. So congratulations to them. Anything you want to add to that, Jeremy?
Best chicken wings in District Two is underneath at Uncle Bear's. Now, if you have a second, if you go into Aqua Tots' website, I think one of the things I was most impressed with, and I wasn't really familiar with the company prior to the ribbon-cutting yesterday, but in doing research, if you look at their principles, they outline like six corporate principles that they live by, and I think it's, one of my philosophies is it's important to have a set of personal principles and corporate principles in order to successfully run any organization, so I was overly impressed. But yeah, there's like six core principles, and the golden rule is the second one, so they're not all unique, but they, they're good, they seem like a good organization, so happy to have them in District Two.
Yeah, amen. Also, speaking of great openings, 12 West, Jen, maybe you want to talk about 12 West? I went, I just want to say, this is going to be one of my favorite spots in town now. I went for lunch there yesterday, had a fantastic meal, wonderful investment in downtown, they had their grand opening on New Year's Eve, but why don't you tell us more about 12 West?
Well, 12 West is a brewery located at 12 West Main in downtown Mesa, and it's probably the largest entrepreneurial investment that we've had in downtown by Brian McCormick as the owner and his partners. It's a tremendous investment, and has a tremendous addition to our synergy in downtown with other breweries and slatheries and restaurants that we have coming in. The grand opening was on New Year's Eve, I did attend, as well as, I don't know how many people, but it was quite crowded with long lines, but there was a lot of energy there, and some other of the city staff were there. It has not only the brewery encompassed in the, in the building, but also spirits, it has handcrafted spirits there, and wine, and the food is fabulous, it's really, really good. The build-out is 7,500 square feet, very well-done, beautiful, old brick amenities, they have live music there, I don't know what the regular schedule, they have a beautiful balcony that overlooks Main Street and the Mesa Art Center, is catty-cornered to Mesa Art Center, so it's a great place to go before or after a performance, as well as any time. I'm so glad to see them more on the eastern end of our downtown, to have that anchor of the infield, because we have a lot of wonderful things going on the west side, so I think this is a great synergy to building our downtown. I couldn't be more excited to have them here, and thank them for all their efforts and commitment and investment in being here. I don't know if there's anything more to say about that. I did also want to do a shout-out for Mark Garcia, which is our CEO or executive director of Visit Mesa. He was honored at an Arizona Tourism Association event right before Christmas for his work on Mesa becoming a certified autism city, and all his work and his staff in doing that, in encompassing not only the Visit Mesa staff, but businesses and the city, so that we can be a more autistic-friendly city, and it's a great addition to who we are in Mesa. Thanks to Mark Garcia and his leadership in that.
The only other thing I wanted to add is, just thank you to everyone who, for the great Mary Main Street celebration we had during the holiday season, 40 days of ice in downtown Mesa, and the kickoff, and the Christmas tree, and the Polar Express events, I thought were all very, very well-done. So Steve Wright, thank you to you and your team. When I came down for the Polar Express, or would come down to see the, with family for the ice rink, the crowds were always very large and very happy, and I obviously really appreciate the city engaging in that event, so in my mind, it gets better every year, and thank you to the city staff for working so hard over the holidays to make that a fun option for folks in Mesa. Other comments? Mr. Freeman?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I had the opportunity to ride with one of our cat officers, Brandon Kozlowski, and, and address some of our homelessness issues in our community, and in our parks, and some of our private areas, and it's amazing the fantastic work that they do in reaching out, even though they do have to cite people once in a while, and also there are some arrests and warrants that need to be issued, but just kudos to them in all our districts, because it is a never-ending issue, and extending services to these people and, and helping them. I was involved with a couple of the issues, and I learned a lot from them, and I appreciate their reach-out. And again, it's a, it's a tough job that they have, and, and it takes constant enforcement for that, to let people know what they can and can't do within our parks and on our private right-of-ways. So I appreciate riding along with them for half a day. Thanks.
Thank you, and I know we're about to get to things upcoming on the schedule, but your mention of homelessness reminded me that next week, I believe it is, we have the, the point-in-time count, and we need additional volunteers to help with that. So if folks that are listening to or attending this meeting are interested in assisting in helping us with an outreach to the homeless in our community, there is, the National Point-in-Time Count is the day that all throughout the United States, we stop and go out and do outreach and look very vigorously for, for folks in the community that are suffering from homelessness, and, and try to interact with them and offer them services, and also collect data, so that we can manage programs to help them better. So if that sounds like something that you'd like to be a part of, we, we need your help in doing that, so please reach out and let us know, and we'd love to have you be a part of that. Other announcements? Jen?
Well, I just want to mention, I know it's on the schedule going forward, but tomorrow is ASU's groundbreaking at 10:30, right here on Pepper, in front of City Hall, and I encourage everybody to come out. This is a very exciting time to see ASU, we're breaking the ground, and they'll be opening in, I guess about two years from now, is the projected date as far as classes starting. So I'm very excited for that, and that being like the icing on the cake for our downtown and, and building our innovation district.
Any other reports, counsel? If not, Mr. Brady, what are, we've kind of set you up here to tell us some stuff we've already.
That's fine, no, I, I'm not going to repeat, I'm just beginning the new year, here we go, so we'll see you on Monday, January 13th, for our study session and council meeting.
Great, so I just, I want to put an explanation, an exclamation point on Jen's invitation for folks to come to the ASU groundbreaking.
Free event.
Tomorrow, 10:30. ASU will be here big time, Dr. Crowe, that'll be a great explanation of a lot of the fantastic programs that are going to go into this very... that are going to go into this very innovative building. This building is going to be really a big part of the puzzle that connects a lot of other things in downtown. So I hope everyone can, can make it. Also, I'll start now putting, asking people to put on their calendar. February 4th is our state of the city, where again, that's just a great opportunity for us to come together at the Centennial Hall. Eight, 900 people will be there, and we'll be kind of rehearsing what's gone over the city in the last year or so, and really looking forward to, to a lot of the things that, that were really on, in an exciting place, and looking forward to a lot of great things happening this year. So please put that on your calendar, February the 4th.